Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to our June 8, 2023 council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form or present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, I'll call this meeting to order, and we'll begin with our invocation. Could we all please stand together? I'd like to welcome Pastor Alden Whiteman from Amazing Grace Baptist Church. And when he concludes his invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, it is with joy we come before you, asking your wisdom and guidance upon this council, upon this meeting. We thank you, our Father, for being reminded of the power and authority you've given to the people. And, Lord, also the care and guidance for these council members. Encourage them and guide them, Lord, to do right. Help us all remember that it's not right to do wrong. We pray for the decisions that are made tonight. We pray, our Father, that you watch over this St. Cloud City, for the community as it grows, for all the things that goes along with growth. Grant wisdom and guidance on that. Help the council and so many of the community development projects that they have. Grant them guidance and help. The Lord wants you to remember that indeed they are servants of the people, of the city. We thank you for your grace. Bless this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Do you want me to pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we be seated. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
I'd like to ask our city manager if there are any agenda updates.
No changes to the agenda, sir.
All right. Thanks, sir. Is Darren Soto, or his office here? If not, we'll move first of all to Mr. Tom Dorsey, who has a presentation regarding the St. Cloud Main Street annual report. It's good to have you here today.
You too, sir. So Representative Stark is up in Orlando somewhere doing something tonight, so you're stuck with me. So I serve currently as the president of the Board of Directors of St. Cloud Main Street, and we're here to give you an update on our annual report. So like all organizations, we have a mission statement and a vision, and I'm not going to read those. You guys can look those over. I'm sure you can see them. But Main Street encourages economic development within the context of historic preservation. These are our partners, our main partners, and we're proud that the city of St. Cloud has been so generous to us over the years and given us whatever we needed and whatever assistance we helped, we've needed, so we appreciate that and your continued support. And of course, cattleman's associations, Florida Farm Bureau, Toho Water Authority, Orlando Health, and all you see, the reliable ones, are our main street partners. And then we do cover some events during throughout the year, and we have breakfast with the pros several times a month, and we also do historic ghost tours. We have our Redneck Gala. You can see all of those on there. I don't think I need to go through all of those, but those were some of the events and programs that we put on here to help revitalize our city and let people know what's happening here in St. Cloud. Two new events this year that we had, we just had the Taste of Main Street, which was the first time we ever did this, and I personally was pretty happy with it. It turned out really well. And just to give you a little background on it, it happened on a fly. We were going to do something, and it was canceled, so we picked this up and ran with it, and thanks to Jules Davidson and Fay Bot, they did a great job with that, and so that's something we're going to look into doing again next year. And we also, as the mayor knows, we did the Historic Preservation and Awards Plaque Program just a few weeks ago. And of course, we didn't give it out any plaques this year, but we hopefully will next year, but this is the first year that we've had this, and this has been on our radar for quite some time to get this program going. So thanks to Paula and all that she's done to make this possible. So our yearly events, again, we do breakfast with the pros. We do seven events, and you can see all of those on there. I don't think I need to go through all of those. You guys are all pretty well familiar with them, I think. Maybe the two gentlemen that are new to the council may not be familiar with everything, but I'm sure that Paula's ventured here a little bit on some of that stuff. But we're really proud for the things that we do and the things that Main Street has done over the last 24 years or so to try to make this place we call home a better place to live. So our main projects, Main Street projects, of course, are our Explorer Downtown, our Cloud Cash, our newsletter, The Bugler. We have our City Flower, our City Bird, and of course, those are things that have gone on and we've put together over the last several years. As you can see, promoting, we have a pretty good presence on social media, our website. We get about 6,000 visitors monthly on our website, and our website highlights all of the things that are going on here in St. Cloud and especially in our historic preservation area and here in downtown St. Cloud. Our newsletter currently has about 1,237 subscribers, and again, that highlights a lot of the things that we're doing here in our district. Social media, Facebook, we have 11,000 followers, which is about 40,000 monthly reach average, and it highlights all of those things that you see there. Instagram, we have about 1,000 followers with 1,500 monthly reach, and so we do have a pretty good, strong presence on social media. Currently, I think we have, I looked at this before I came, I thought we had nine plaque, but we have eight right now, historic plaques. Mount Peak Cemetery, the VFW, Fisk Funeral Home, the Women's Club, all of those have historic plaques, and we're in the process of working on another one, and if I get my notes here right now, I can tell you real quick, there's another one in the works, and I don't want to, there's another one in the works. And I want to thank the Sons of the Union Veterans. They help us when we unveil those plaques. They come to all of those and help us with that, so we appreciate that. Since its inception, these are some of the things that we've done, kind of in a chronological order, from 2005, helping along with the city and the CRA to establish the CRA, historic ordinances, historic preservation board, city flower resolution, city bird resolution. And we're going to go down to the grant process there, the 21, 22 grant applications, 21, 22, 23, and 23. The last one, we should be hearing something any day on it now. I think Paula seems to think it's a sure thing, but we should have heard something by now, but we don't. But those three grants total about $150,000 that are going to go towards the things that we do here. And then the last grant for 23, 24 will be applied for so we can again put 300 more historic homes in our inventory of historic homes. So again, we want to thank our partners and our sponsors, our patron sponsors, and you can see them, and all of them, all of you know them well. They're well embedded in our community, all staples in our community, and we do appreciate everything that they all do to help us achieve our mission and our goal. And then again, that's our 2020, 23 sponsors, and you can see them again. It's sort of a who's who of St. Cloud and Osceola County, and so we, again, we appreciate everything they do for us. So currently, we have, and I think Paula told me, an update, we have 64 Main Street awards now that we've been given since the inception of the Main Street. I think it was in 1999 we got started, and so that's 22 years of service, so we've had 64 awards now, and we are getting another one. Paula's going next month to the state meeting, and we're getting scheduled to get another award, so that'll put us at 65 awards, I believe. And so this is our value statement. This kind of gives you a rundown of, from its inception, St. Main Street's inception until today, we put in about $5 million into our community, and then we have some in-kind sponsorships there that total almost $500,000. So overall, since the institution or the inception of Main Street, we feel we're pretty proud of that and feel pretty good about the money that we're bringing back into our community, into our economy. So in over 24 years, the city has given us about $1 million in funding for our Main Street program, and again, on behalf of Paula and our Board of Directors, we can't thank you enough for your continued support for the Main Street program. And I think that's my presentation. On behalf of myself, Rick is here tonight, he's our board member, and on behalf of our board, it's my honor to present our report, and I thank you all for your time.
We certainly would like to thank you and Main Street for the incredible work that you guys do and the investments that you've made back into our city as well as into our citizens. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Would anyone on the council have a question?
And Mr. Councilman Urban is on our board as well. He's our liaison, so we're honored to have him on.
That's part of why they're doing such a good job, right?
Yes, exactly.
There's a lot of fantastic volunteers at St. Cloud Main Street, and it's an honor to be a part of it, so thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a presentation by the Honorable Congressman Darren Soto regarding the community project funding for '23 and the request that was made for Hopkins Park Service Area. It's great to have you here.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you so much for having me. It was great to see many of you at the Memorial Day recognition for those we lost in the line of duty, and just appreciate you all do, I'll say it, it may be controversial, the best Memorial Day event in the district. It really goes to soldier city and the history of this city and the work that's being done at the local cemetery here. Last week, we came together to vote in a bipartisan way on a debt ceiling bill that protected the full faith and credit of the United States, so at least 300-something members from both sides of the aisle thought it was important to keep our economy, our nation, and our government, and our way of life running strong, so I was honored to be one of those. We were pleased last year to help out with $2.5 million in alternative water supply. Mayor, you and the Commissioners have been very clear, we will continue to work together on improving water issues around here for fast-growing St. Cloud, and that has been reflected in a lot of the work that we've been able to do together. This year, an additional $1 million for Hopkins Park Services, the subject of the budget project that we just got in late last year for septic-to-sewer projects there in a neighborhood that really needed it for a long time. We're also happy to help work with you all on the American Rescue Plan to help pay for the recent downtown improvements, Pennsylvania Avenue. I'm going to have dinner right after this in one of our local businesses down here, and I'm just so thrilled at how the town looks. And recently even bought, Mississippi, our 10th anniversary ring in one of your former colleagues jewelry stores around here, so we appreciate, as a former business owner, supporting around here the small businesses. I know your city manager probably mentioned a few weeks ago that you all were able to get $337,301 in community development block grants. We need to continue to fund that program in Washington. We, in Washington, believe in local control and helping get you funding, and then you all help do what's best for your communities. That may not be in fashion everywhere, but that's definitely how we'll continue to work together. One of the biggest projects for the region was a $193 million WIFTIA loan. That's our water resources loans that Toho Water got. I think it was a wise decision for this council, under your leadership, Mayor, to work with Toho Water. Now, this is the real sort of workhorse funding that's going to help over the next 10 years, a low-interest loan that Toho Water did a great job of working with us to get. Just down the road in Neo City, just last year, we were able to secure $51 million for Build Back Better Innovation Grant. We want to continue to make sure whether it's Neo City or Lake Nona, that we are helping with tech clusters and bringing some of those businesses to red here in St. Cloud as well. Excuse me. And then, of course, after Hurricane Ian, we saw continued issues with flooding, not only in St. Cloud, but point of Ventura Lakes and in Kissimmee, and so we were able to get Lake Runnymede, the project authorized. We still got to get the money. I know it's, there's been invasive plants there for a while, and while East Lake Toho looks great from the recent Army Corps of Engineers scrape, but we know we got to continue to improve that, Boggy Creek and other creeks in the region for flood control and helping out with recreation and wildlife and our water supply. We fought to get back on the Ag Committee to help out our local ranchers. I'm one of two Florida members who are on the Ag Committee. We just hosted a bunch of our local ranchers and farmers this week, and our FFA locally too, so really great to see our young people continue to be civic-minded. And a new legislative analyst who was raised in St. Cloud, so her mom even had some horses in the local Silver Spur's rodeo parade that you all had a little while ago, so we're trying to keep our staff regionally representative of the whole district, and was very excited about that. For this year, we have two major projects lined up for St. Cloud upon the city's request and Toho Water's request, the St. Cloud Downtown Flood Control, speaking of which, $3.265 million. We will try to get the whole thing. It was an ambitious request, and we requested the whole amount. We will do our best to get every penny of that done, but we'll see. We want to make sure we're bringing our taxpayer dollars with St. Cloud residents paying a third of their income up to Washington. This money needs to come back to improve our community. And then in addition, Toho Water has asked on behalf of St. Cloud for $697,000 for a downtown St. Cloud new water main, so two great projects to help complement the work you did on Pennsylvania Avenue here in the Main Street area. And though not in the city, a nearby witted neighborhood is getting, we're asking for a new water main. I know that's a community that's adjacent to here, that is an important part of the metro area. And then we've also just recently written a letter of support for a COPS grant for St. Cloud Police Department for six new officers. We know in the fastest-growing city in the district that we need to continue to protect public safety and have our police officers back, so we'll hopefully be able to bring that home. Those have been challenging grants to get, but we're going to keep going until we get that. So with that, thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate the work we get to do together.
And?
If you'd like to join us for a photo.
I'd like for the council to step down and to join you, but I'd like to just thank you personally for all that you have done, your leadership and the way that you've served our city faithfully, and thank you for all of the financial support and help that you have brought to our city, especially when we have special needs, and thank you so much for your leadership.
It's my honor. We'll continue to present your vision up in Washington and happy to do so.
Can we step down together and get a picture together, council?
Keep asking, we'll do our best to get it. Everybody who tore me does a bit. Yep. Perfect.
Hold on, hold on.
People need to know what's going on with our resources, right? So, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not in this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested a completed signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and we will ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. William Campbell. Good seat, Mr. Campbell.
William Campbell, 816 Maryland Avenue. Mayor, councilmembers, I come to you with a question, basically. Before the question, know a little bit of history. Back in 2019, I went before the Board of Adjustments and got approval to build a building on my property, along with another gentleman at 101 East Fifth Street. Both of the buildings were granted the privilege of building the buildings. Then it turns around that your city council comes and denies mine or actually appeals it with the courts, and it goes through the courts and it is appealed, so I was unable to build my building. The courts did appeal it on basis of a commercial structure and not at a residential location. Basically, I just have a question as to why I was chosen to be appealed and not the other gentleman, and why are we not being fair across the board to everybody? I mean, let's face it, the neighborhood that it's in, you just put a building there. Well, the building was there, but you increased it by five or six feet for no reason at all except for aesthetics, and that's the Canary Building, okay? So with that in mind, I just wanted to know why my project was appealed and not the other gentleman's. Is it a, I'm just asking that question. And I know that a lot of you council members was not on that at this time, but I know the mayor was, and he was, and I know the city attorney was here and everything like that and stuff, so. But I don't know if you can answer that question now, but if you could maybe get back to me, I sure would appreciate it to give me an answer to why mine was appealed and not the other gentleman.
We can certainly try to get an answer back for that, yes. I don't have that information available.
Okay, we will certainly get back with you. Thank you for your question. We'll certainly address it. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Would anyone else like to speak during the Citizens Forum? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. I believe there's an item you need to address, Mr. Tomek.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So on consent item number A, there was a clerical error in the resolution. In the sixth whereas clause, we had to revise the 2 TO, 2 for FOR, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. The one you signed, the one you signed this evening will have the correct language in there, and I also want to clarify on that item that that is for projects in St. Cloud only.
Thank you. First of all, is there any item on the consent agenda the council is wishing to address? If not, would anyone in the audience like to speak to the consent agenda? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council. What's the pleasure of the council regarding the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
The next item on our agenda are public hearings. Madam Clerk, will you please read item number one into the record?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2023-23, in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 4.8 acres identified as Davis Island from MHA City Manufacture Mobile Homes Annexation and MH2 City Residential Manufacture Mobile Homes to a R-3 multifamily dwelling city zoning designations located on 2256 Missouri Avenue, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, filing of the Planning Commission Recommendation and Proof of Publication, applicability and effect, separability, copies on files, and effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Dagmarie Segarra, Deputy Director for Community Development. This item, as stated by the city clerk, is the final hearing of a rezoning located at 2256 Missouri Avenue. This item was heard by this council on the last council meeting on May and May, and recommended approval to approve a rezoning from MHA and MH2 to R3 multifamily. Staff has determined that there is no adverse impacts on the city's facilities, and presented an exhibit with the difference of zonifications in comparison and a comparison of density in lots. It meets the growth management, and the DRC or staff recommended approval. Planning Commission also recommended approval, and is requested of this council to approve the approval of ordinance 2223-23. The applicant is here to answer any questions, and I'm also available to answer any questions.
Would the applicant like to speak to this item?
Good evening, councilmembers. Jeremy Kibler, KDA Engineering, 2017, 13th Street, St. Cloud, Florida, 34769. As staff noted, council voted on May 25 to approve this request. We respectfully ask for your approval here tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
And it carries. It brings us to items two and three.
First reading, an introduction of ordinance number 2023-26, in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of private institutional to approximately 2.91 acres identified as 2351 Canoe Creek Road Development located north of Firdick Road, east of Canoe Creek Road, and west of Missouri Avenue, providing for amending the official's future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the Planning Commission Recommendation and Proof of Publication, applicability and effect, separability, copies on files, and effective date.
Good evening again. Dagmarie Segarra, Deputy Director for Community Development. This is a rezoning and a comprehensive plan amendment for a property located at 2351 Canoe Creek Road. The staff recommends approval. The existing future land designation for this property is low-density residential. The applicant is requesting a private institutional future land use designation, and the existing zoning is RE, single-dwelling family, family dwelling, sorry. The proposed zoning is professional, which is similar to office. The development is compatible with the surrounding area, and there is no adverse impacts to city's facilities. This is a representation of the comparison between the existing zoning, which is residential, and the proposed office use. The main comparison here is that the square footage for the lots are greater for the professional, and the measures for the density is on floor area ratio, which dictates the total square footage of a maximum for the property. At its current net buildable acreage is 2.91, and based on that, we can make the assumption that with the existing low-density residential, which allows a maximum for four dwelling units per acres, the maximum of lot that could happen in this property if it remains a single family will be eight lots approximately. And the proposed FAR has a maximum ratio of .60, a maximum of 30,000 roughly a square footage for the property. That is not taken in consideration of the infrastructure improvements such as stormwater landscaping, parking, and all that, so that number will greatly be decreased. This is a picture of the future land use map and zoning surrounding the property, and it meets the growth management strategic goal for the city. Staff recommends approval. Staff recommends approval. The Planning Commission also recommended approval for both ordinances, and is requested for city council to also approve ordinances 2023-26 and 2023-27. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also here to answer any questions you may have.
Would the applicant like to speak to this item? By your popular name.
Just for now. We'll see how it goes.
We'll see in a minute.
Yes, sir. Good evening again. Jeremy Kibler, KDA Engineering. I'm here representing the owner of the property. We understand there may be some apprehensive thoughts on the request with regard to allowing both public and private schools as a permitted use for the subject property. While there are no current plans for that use, if I may, if council wishes to do so, I would suggest potentially the inclusion of a condition making the public and private school use a conditional use with the ordinance for the subject property. That way, it doesn't eliminate it completely. It would require such a proposal to come back before the council for full review and approval. That way, we can move forward, add the condition. Again, I just hate to eliminate it completely, just in case, you know, there were some circumstances unforeseen in the future, which, you know, would allow that application to come forward. Respectfully asking for your approval here tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll stand by. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to either of these ordinances? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council. Councilmember Matheny.
Do you want to go?
Do you need to go first?
No, you can go ahead.
Oh, well, thank you, Mr. Kibler. So you're voluntarily offering to add a condition that takes institutional off the table, but it could come back in the future with a conditional use application.
Well, public and private schools.
Right, for public and private schools. Right, okay. Thank you for adding that voluntarily. I appreciate it. I mean, if no one else has comments, I...
If I could just make one little process.
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Menzer. That restriction, actually, under your land development code, which is permissible, that actually would be part of item number three, which has not been read into the record.
So we'll wait and add that in three?
Yes. So we can take action on item two, and then we can go to item three, and then that's when you would add that. Okay. Do we have any other discussion from council or questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
So we have a motion for the approval of ordinance number 2023-26 from Councilmember Matheny, a second by Councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Brings us to item number three, ordinance number 2023-27. Councilmember Matheny, would you like to make a motion with the amendment? It needs to be read into the record first, Mayor. Okay, please.
First reading and introduction of ordinance number 2023-27 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 2.91 acres identified as 2351 Canoe Creek Road from RE, single-family dwelling zoning designation to P, professional zoning designation, with a private institutional future land use designation adopted by ordinance number 2023-26, generally located north of Firdick Road and east of Canoe Creek and west of Missouri Avenue, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, separability, and effective date.
Thank you. I'll ask once again, would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council.
I'll make a motion to approve with the condition that we discussed in the previous one, to eliminate institutional for private and charter schools, public schools. If that changed, they would have to come back for a conditional use.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Urban. Are we clear on that, Mr. Menzer? We will. We'll have it clear. This is first reading, so we'll get the language all clear, and you'll see it in the ordinance when it comes back for final adoption. We have, again, a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Urban with the amendment conditions added. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Madam Clerk, please read items four and five into the record, please.
First reading and introduction of ordinance number 2023-28 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of commercial to approximately 33... 3.34 acres identified as Me Nolte, located south of Nolte Road, east of Michigan Avenue, and west of Delaware Avenue, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, separability, copies on files, and effective date. Reading... First reading and introduction of ordinance number 2023-29 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 3.34 acres identified as Me Nolte from A, agriculture, and RE, single-family dwelling zoning designation, to B-C, business commercial zoning designation with a commercial future land use designation adopted by ordinance number 2023-28, generally located south of Nolte Road and east of Michigan Avenue and west of Delaware Avenue, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, separability, and effective date.
Good evening. Dag Marie Sagara, Deputy Director of Community Development. This request is for a rezoning and a comprehensive plan amendment for a property located south of Nolte and east of Michigan Avenue. At the time of the original application, the applicant requested for a business commercial for a rezon. After conversations with staff, it was determined that the most appropriate rezon for this property will be HB. The title of the ordinance could not be changed because all of this happened after the advertisement of the item, but the item... The request of zoning of HB is of a lesser intense... intensity than the business commercial. So we've... Staff felt that it was appropriate... Most appropriate for the location. The existing future land use of the property is low-density residential. The proposed future land use is commercial. The existing zoning is agricultural, RE, single-family dwelling, and the proposed zoning this evening is highway business. The development is compatible with the surrounding area, and there is no adverse impacts into the city's facilities. This is a comparison of all three zonings, and between the RE and agricultural, both residential zonings, and the highway business, which is determined by the FAR of .75. They're comparable in regards to densities in a net developable area of 3.34 acres with the four dwelling units per acre as maximum. The potential number of units in the existing RE will be approximately four lots, and in the P that is agriculture will be approximately one... Will be one lot. In the proposed FAR with the HB, a maximum buildable... Maximum square footage of 50,000 square footage will be the maximum. And as I mentioned before, this is not taking into consideration any infrastructure, ponds, landscape, and parking that is required, so that number will be reduced. This is a depiction of the future land use map and zoning map. This area has been identified for a transitional urban area under invasion of St. Cloud, which would... It does encourage commercial in major intersections. It meets a strategic goal of growth management. Staff recommended approval in May of 2023. Planning Commission recommended also approval in May of 2023, and is requested from city council to approve ordinance 2023-28 and ordinance number 2023-29. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here to answer any questions you may have.
Would the applicant like to speak to this item? These items?
My name is Steve Romke, 3040 Rambler Avenue, St. Cloud. Unless you have any questions, it's pretty straightforward. It's a good opportunity to reduce traffic and keep it in that area. Excuse me.
All right. Thank you very much. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to either of these ordinances? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council. What's the pleasure of the council regarding item number four, ordinance number 2023-28?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
What's the pleasure of the council regarding ordinance number 2023-29? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from Councilmember Urban. Second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Brings us to item number six. Madam Clerk.
First reading and introduction of ordinance number 2023-30 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud, Florida, approximately 14.36 acres identified as Old Hickory Tree Estates, located north of Gramercy Farms Road, west of Hickory Tree Road, and east of Old Hickory Tree Road in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes.
Good evening. I promise this is the last one, at least for me. Dag Marie Sagara, Deputy Director, Community Development. This is the first reading for an annexation of a property as stated by... Located as stated by the city clerk. The property is approximately 14.36 acres. At this time, the property is contiguous and reasonably compact, and it meets the requirements of the statute. It's adjacent to city limits, and the existing county future land use density is low-density residential, and the existing county zoning is R2 rural, AC agricultural, and conservation. At this time, the applicant is still working with staff for an appropriate zoning of the property. At the time, we just want to get the property annexed into the city as we work future development for the property. It meets the strategic goals of growth management. Staff recommended approval in October of 2022. The Planning Commission recommended approval in May this year, and city council has requested approval of ordinance 2020 through... 2023-30. It concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here to answer any questions you may have.
Would the applicant like to speak to this item?
Good evening, Commissioners. Andrew Mattello, 1713 Belalago Drive. I'm representing Vista Grand Properties, the property owner. The previous owners took a... Were trying to do a townhome development with this. They were going for 106 townhomes. We're taking a little bit of a different direction. We're going for a single-family development. It's gonna... The density will be cut in half, approximately 54 dwelling units. It's gonna be rear-load products, front-load products, gonna have a unique unit mix. If I may, I'd like to pass around a conceptual... It's going to have a full amenity package, pool, cabana, and I'm here if you have any questions. I'm asking for your support, and open any questions you may have.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? We'll take comment at this point. Jeffrey Smith has requested to speak.
Hello, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to wear my hat, so I'm sorry. I've never been to one of these.
Then just take it off, then.
Okay. But thank you so much for all the hard work that you guys do. You guys are amazing. I've been in this town for a long time. Pastor of City of Life Church, went to St. Cloud High School. I see somebody went to high school. Hello.
You can't preach tonight.
No preaching, no preaching. Yes, we own the property right behind that, so that whole area, the 10 acres right there, there's a little lake that's right there, and the church has owned that since 2017. And I kind of heard, I think, the previous people that were trying to do it, were trying to develop something pretty big there, but kind of with our plans and like the whole point of kind of getting that to begin with was to not be in that kind of high-traffic area where there was so much stuff going on, just due to some of the plans that we have, and we're not even fully sure right now exactly how we want to use it, but as you guys know, it's... I get offers all the time, people just like offering crazy amounts of money to buy that just because it's such a desirable area, but most of those... Most of the land that's around there is just houses. It's just like huge five-acre, 10-acre plots with just houses. So to kind of turn that into a, you know, something like that, like townhomes, like where there's all kinds of people right there up against that, is just such a different... Just a different feel from what it originally was. So, yeah, I just wanted to come hear about it, hear what's going on, and just kind of, you know, make any kind of appeal if possible, keep that area, you know, as our county's growing, you know? Some of the thing that made it great to begin with was being able to have a place like that where you're kind of away from things, and I know that it's impossible that... I feel like that area, and I don't even know... I'm not an insider, but I know that that area is going to be very explosive over the years in terms of the kinds of growth, but I definitely would hope that we would keep it more like it is than approve something where you've just got dozens and dozens of families right next to, you know, residents that are right there. So that would be my thought.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Would the applicant like to speak once again?
So thank you for that feedback. It was a good point mentioned. We're actually... It's not going to be a townhome development. It's going to be single-family, and the density that we're proposing is a lot less. It's less than half of what previously was proposed. We're going to be meeting and exceeding any kind of traffic requirements imposed by the city, so I think, hopefully, that would address that concern.
Thank you very much. At this point, we'll have discussion and a motion by council. Councilmember Urban.
If I'm understanding correctly, the item before us tonight is simply for annexation.
I was going to clarify that. You're just voting on the annexation. We'll have plenty of time to talk about the land use and the zoning when they come back.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions or discussion? Could I entertain a motion regarding annexation?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Gilbert.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
This item will be coming back before the council with any kind of development or proposals that they have, and I'm sure you will have an opportunity to come back, review that, and speak and share your concerns then. If you have any other questions, you can see that guy before you leave tonight. Brings us to item number seven. Madam Clerk, please read that into the record.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-31 in ordinance of the City of St. Cloud, amending the City of St. Cloud general employees retirement system, amending Section 6, benefits, amounts, and eligibility, providing for codification, providing for separability of provisions, repelling all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
Good evening. Justin Kleisner, Human Resources Director. This request is to provide a one-time cost of living adjustment of 3% to our retirees in the general pension. This follows suit with what we did recently with our police and fire pension, providing a one-time cost of living increase for them as well. We are, as some of you are aware, we are looking to provide a long-term solution, so we're not bringing forward one-time fixes every so often, and that should be coming up within the next few months as well.
Thank you. Would anybody in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we will have discussion and a motion by council. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you, Justin. That was the... Thank you, Justin. That was the question I had in my agenda review. I was like, I feel like we just did this, and so, yeah, I'm glad that we're doing, trying to streamline the process and stuff. That'll definitely be helpful for everyone moving forward. I'll make a motion to approve.
Any other question for, entertain a second? We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Mayor makes a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number eight. Madam Clerk, please read that into the record.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, amending chapter two, administration, article two, City Council, Division one, generally, section two dash thirty-one, salary to providing and establishing City Council salaries based on future population growth, providing an effective date, providing that council member holding a council seat as of the date that this ordinance is adopted shall not be eligible for an increase unless that council member has been reelected or reappointed after final adoption hereof, providing for subraibility, conflict and codification.
Hello again. Justin Kleisner, HR Director. As you know, with the past two or some of the two recent council workshops, we worked through a few different options to update the compensation structure for council members. We looked at a few different models and we settled on one that is similar to the City of Kissimmee's model, which pays higher rates based on population with a prorated amount for each person over the threshold. So, this is to adjust for future population growth in the city, and as you're aware, this would only take effect for those council members who are elected or appointed after the adoption of this ordinance. And then the model is on the screen as well.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion or motion by council. Councilmember Gilbert.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. This, for the sitting council here, this will not affect us at all. Re-election, it still will not affect if some of these council want to be reelected.
So, this will take, if this is adopted at the second hearing, then for any council member who is reelected at their next term or at the next election, then that will take effect at that point.
Just needed clarification.
It will not take effect for current sitting members.
Good, good.
Yep.
So, if you'd like to get a raise, two and a half years from now, you've got to run for office again and get elected. If it's passed. We have any other discussion from council? Could I entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Got a motion from Councilmember Gilbert. Have a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
No.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four one.
Madam Clerk, could you please read item number nine into the record?
First public hearing for resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one thirteen R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-three annual action plan for the community development block grant program, providing for conflict and providing an effective date.
Good evening. Antranet Forbes Economic Development Director. The item before you is for the first of two hearings for our twenty twenty-three annual action plan, which is tied to our funding for our community development block grant, also known as CDBG. So, as part of that process, which we've illustrated here, there is a consolidated plan, which is a five-year plan that specifies how we intend to spend that funding. All the items listed in this action plan are part of that consolidated plan. Our annual action plan has to be, has to have two public hearings for its first adoption, and any amendments considered substantial has to come back before the council for approval and include a public notice process. So, it's our intention with the funding for twenty twenty-three, which is totals three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and one dollars, to be allocated as illustrated with housing programs, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars, which represents fifty-six percent of the total allocation. Economic development activities for eighty thousand, which represents twenty-four percent public services, which should be our summer camp program for seven thousand, which represents two percent, and of course, the administration of the program, which allows up to twenty percent of our funding. It's also, want to make you aware that we cannot actually start drawing down or using this funding until October one of this year. Part of that process includes the citizens' participation process, which is what we're doing here, where anyone will have the opportunity to speak on how we plan to expend those funds, as well as a second public hearing scheduled for the July twentieth City Council meeting, our public comment period, where anyone can come into our office. They can email, call or in writing to provide their comments. It's from May eighteen to June seventeen. They, as I was saying, they can also review a draft of the, excuse me, the action plan in its entirety on our website, as well as they can reach out to us directly at cdbg@stcloudfl.com, excuse me, dot gov. Upon its approval, it will be submitted to HUD for review and their approval, which then will allow us to enter it into their system, and then we start drawing down on those funds. Staff recommends the approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash one thirteen R and is requesting City Council approval of its first reading.
Thank you. Anything else? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Second from the mayor. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this, next item, our agenda is council action, but there are no council action items at this time, which brings us to our illustrious city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just report that I will not be at the council meeting next, your next council meeting, June twenty-second. Lindsey Green, my partner, will be here in my place. I'll be out of state, so. So, I want to report.
All right.
Cancel the meeting.
Hope you have a wonderful trip wherever you're going. Mr. Tomac, our city manager.
I'm just happy to report, so far, so good with the city manager on vacation, and we so, we so appreciate all your patience, and you have a wonderful staff because they've been getting things done in the interim, so I do appreciate that as well. You're going to note that we canceled the workshop in your information, so.
Thank you.
Nothing else, sir. Thank you.
You think Veronica's watching?
I hope so.
At this point, we'll hear from our council members. Councilmember Fletcher.
The only thing that I have this evening, Mayor, is as we all know, we recently did the salary study and have been making those adjustments accordingly. I was wondering if we could get council support for the assistant city manager to take a look at the fire chief's salary and adjust accordingly.
If I may, Mayor.
Yes.
I think, given the situation where it is, the most appropriate way to handle that, if that is something that the council would like to have done, then the council could, should probably just take formal action on that. My understanding, Mr. Fletcher, your concern would, or your, your suggestion would be that the fire chief's salary be adjusted in accordance with that salary study?
Correct, of course.
So, I think the, given the situation, I think the best way to handle this would be for the City Council to take formal action on that, so that either the assistant city manager or the city manager could be placed in that position, and then it would come out of the City Council. So, if you're inclined to do that this evening, as you know, under your rules of procedure, if you're going to take final action on something, the item has to be added to the agenda for discussion and by a motion, and then if it is added to the agenda, then we would have a discussion on it, so it's a two-step process. So, if that's something, Mr. Fletcher, that you'd like to have part of the discussion tonight, then I'd suggest you make a motion to add it to the agenda, get a second on that, take a quick vote, and then we can talk about moving forward.
Okay. With that, I would make a motion to add that to the next agenda.
To this agenda.
To this agenda.
To this agenda. We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher. We have a second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, will you please call, do I just call the roll on that one?
Yes, she needs to call the roll.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
So, I understand that, again, as I said earlier, the discussion point would be is the council willing to take formal action to adjust the fire chief's salary in accordance with the recently completed salary study.
That is correct.
There's a discussion on that.
Do we have any other discussion? Are you wanting to make that into a motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
Second.
What'd he say?
We have a motion to authorize the city manager to.
No, and it just, we're authorizing.
You are, the motion, as I said, would be to adjust, to formally adjust the fire chief's salary in accordance with the recently completed salary study.
Salary study, got you.
That would be action by the City Council.
All right. So, that'd be our action then. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
I'll follow through.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Fletcher?
That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Gilbert.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Tomac for stepping up and strolling in to do this. He's been wonderful to work with this past week on this agenda, so thank you. And safe travels to my friend over there.
Oh, thank you.
Councilmember Matheny.
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Urban.
I just also would like to thank Deputy City Manager, Tomac. He's doing an amazing job in the absence of our city manager right now, and of course, as he mentioned, the entire staff at our city is, as always, does a fantastic job, so thank you to everyone. That's it.
So, that brings me to me, and I'll just say ditto to all that. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Mr. Manzera, your light is on. Are you wanting to?
No, sir. I'm sorry.
Already addressed. Thank you. Brings us to our information section and report section. Thursday, June the fifteenth, there will be a City Council workshop that will not meet. It's been canceled. Monday, June the nineteenth, city offices will be closed in observance of the Juneteenth holiday. Thursday, June the twenty-second, there will be a City Council meeting at six thirty PM here in City Hall, Council Chambers. A proclamation recognition of Pride Month has been issued. Reports are available. Warrant list number twelve, Economic Development Advisory Committee minutes for March have been approved or available for your review. The tree advisory committee minutes for February have also been approved and are available for your review. There are no other items on agenda. With that, we will be adjourned. Thank you for participating in your government.